Hello, everyone, and welcome. We will call this meeting to order at 6:02 Sanford High School School Committee on City Council Chambers, Third Floor, City Hall Annex, on Monday, September 8th, 2025. All right, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I don't believe we have any adjustments, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have the approval of minutes, excuse me, for August 14th, which is a workshop, Monday, August 18th, which was a regular meeting, Monday, August 25th, executive session, Monday, August 25th, another executive session, and Monday, August 25th, another executive session. Do everybody motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. I second that.
All in favor? Perfect. Thank you. We, I'm assuming, don't have any public comment. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Nope, okay. Communications, we did receive a communication, actually, last meeting, I think, August 25th, when we were getting up to go, there was an email in our inbox from John Mapes regarding the mission and vision. So we thank you, Mr. Mapes. We also did receive an email from a gentleman named Todd Erickson regarding solar on Earth, and he is requesting a meeting, so we will be in touch with that. I don't believe we received anything else, so just going through our emails from the transfer portal or whatever we'll call it. Moving on to committee reports.
Sure. Special Education Advisory Committee meeting is, we have not met yet. The first meeting is this week, this Wednesday, 2:30, at Sanford Community Adult Education. The agenda will be to review the work started last year on program development for the three- to five-year-olds and the 18- to 22-year-olds. After that review, we'll continue our work in developing a roadmap with action steps that will help guide our work for the remainder of the year and also determine meeting dates for now through January with that. As you saw, as you mentioned with email, we've had a changeover in our email system, going from an Outlook system to a Google Mail system. So that has been challenging on a number of fronts. It's going to help us in the long run, but it can be, you know, challenging on that way. So Special Education Advisory Committee meeting this Wednesday. And then, as far as policy, Policy Committee met a while. The last time they met was a couple of weeks ago, and you'll see that work reflected on the agenda later on in the Policy section of the agenda.
All right, perfect. Moving on to Super Intense Report.
Sure. So I heard from Zach and Matt, not going to be able to be here tonight as student representatives. They hope to be here for our next meeting. But we also are in search of a new student representative from the class of 2027. So applications are currently being accepted for student representatives to the school committee. Applications can be picked up at Sanford High School, right in the Assistant Principal's office. The deadline to return those will be this Wednesday at 3 o'clock, September 10th, with the hope of having an initial interview conducted later this week on September 11th, and the hope is that finalists are going to be interviewed by the school committee next Monday, prior to our regular meeting at 6 o'clock. So it is an aggressive timeline, but it's also one that we've used in the past so that we can find a replacement for Elsie, who graduated, with that. So I'll handle the Sanford Spotlight Newsletter that just came out. And so the first thing that we have there was, this edition was really focused on the kickoff to the school year. So we had our Welcome Back for Staff back on Wednesday, August 27th, in the Performing Arts Center. We were able to have the Welcome Back kicked off by our Chamber Singers from Sanford High School. They did an outstanding job, so very appreciative of them. What a great way to kick off the Welcome Back, and that standpoint. Prior to that, on Tuesday, the 26th, we had our new teacher orientation. That's our onboarding for all of our teachers, that really combines a lot of different aspects to help people get welcomed to the Sanford School Department. One of the big areas is we do assign them their mentors, and they are able to meet with their mentors in the afternoon, as well as to be able to meet with their building administrators. And those are big helps and big pluses that way. A big thank you to the mentors for stepping up and being such a resource for us to be able to do that. We have some students are in the news as the fall athletics gets ready to kick off. We had a few of our students identified as some of the players to watch in their respective sports for football, field hockey, and boy soccer with that. So Zach Lumlin, our Athletic Director, will be here at next week's meeting to provide an update on to fall athletics. And then, if you remember, last year, Diana Allen was recognized with a Presidential Teaching Award. And this summer, when the Maine Department of Education held their workshop, their summit, back at the beginning of August, they also identified, they recognized people that way. So that's when you could see Diana was formally recognized by the Maine Department of Education. So that's a great honor for her. Bringing back our Employee Spotlight, where we always try to get to know our employees a little better. This addition, it focuses on Margaret Chase Smith's school nurse, Melissa Phillips, as our Employee Spotlight. And then, our First 10 work continues to do great things for elementary schools. And so here you have their First 10 newsletter that comes back for September to be able to do that. And then, also, the Department of Education is, the work that we've been doing has obviously been recognized. The Department of Education asked us to put together a video highlighting our work in Sanford. And so if you come in, you'll be able to check on to that video. That's pretty cool. And then, some other announcements, just so people know, if there are some people in the community that want to be able to put a community announcement out, we have a section for that, that we can be able to highlight. And so there is an approval form that people can click, put that in, and then we'll be able to highlight their information through our community announcements. Free meals for breakfast and lunch are continuing for the 2025-2026 school year, so we've got our breakfast times there. September is Attendance Awareness Month. Obviously, we want to get off to a really good start, so there's some links there to also help on how people can improve their attendance, get into a routine. Here's our app to be able to receive all our information, to follow those steps on the Sanford School Department app. If you don't have that, you want to download that. Don't just wait for no school announcements. You can be able to get other information as well, to be able to help you stay connected to the school department. And then Athletics has a new app that they're using, so there's information there that you can download as well, to help keep you connected from our Athletic Department, to be able to get real game time information and schedules, to stay up to date there. Speaking of that, there are ways to watch Sanford High School home games on Huddle. In the event that you're not able to attend, you'll be able to come back and do that. So we have a link there that will help people get set up that way. And then, some other additional links that we use to help people stay connected. You get the Cities Newsletter for the Sanford Springvale News. We have the Cities News to be able to keep them connected. And then you also have the Sanford Springvale News. They do a great job of covering our community and covering our school department, so you've got a link there. And then you've got WSSR-TV, where there could also be some other videos with that. So a big thank you to Sam Bonzi for being able to help put that together for our Spotlight. As far as an opening of school update, we're off to a really good start. One of the things that you're going to see later in tonight's meeting, as well as next Monday's meetings, is we're going to have our principals and directors come in to provide that update on the opening of school. So I'm not going to steal their thunder, other than I'm very pleased with a lot of positive energy that's been going on. We actually start preparing, even though last week was the first week of school, we start preparing ahead of time with a lot of meetings and trainings to be able to do that. Our custodians and maintenance had their training earlier this summer that I think helped really set the tone and get us off in a good start there. Our administrative assistants had their meeting in mid-August as well, all day. That was a day meeting, also, including lunch, that did a nice job there. Our administrators met throughout August, and we also had the school committee workshop to come back and do that. Our food service also had their training. Before, I had an opportunity to come and be able to talk to our food service workers. And as I mentioned, we had our new staff orientation, new teacher orientation, as well as all staff. The other thing we always try to do is have our open houses before school starts, and those are also have been very successful, very well attended, a lot of positive energy. The weather really cooperated with us this year, and it was great to see all of that happening. And Athletics at the high school, they've been going since, you know, the last two weeks in August to get ready. So a lot of great action going on for that. Our first day of school was not until last Tuesday, September 2nd. And as I mentioned, our principals and directors will provide updates. But I just wanted to give a big thank you to all of our staff and all of their respective positions, being able to come together and really help set us up into, at the beginning of the school year, a positive one. I mentioned the email switch. That's been a little bit challenging for us to navigate, but kudos to all of our staff and stakeholders for working together to be able to do that. And then, next on the agenda is an enrollment update. And so let me pass out this. So what you see on the screen, thank you, Sarah, is obviously, any time that the beginning of the school year happens, we're always very much paying attention to enrollment. That's something for Sanford School Department, as a high receiver of state subsidy, that the two biggest drivers of subsidy are your valuation and your student enrollment. And so we have to certify our enrollment based on October 1st figures, so it's still somewhat of a moving target. But I did want to provide the latest update as of last Friday, September 5th. And what you'll see on the screen is, on the left is the school, and then, in the left-hand column, and then on the top, as you go away, will show our grade levels. And then you will see the number of students in each grade level, and then you'll see a total for that, through those different totals. And so if, as we dig into this, you will see that for Carl J. Lamb, our attending students are 422. If you compare that to last year's October 1st, 2024, attending student count, there was 432. So we have 10 less there. And then we also do, and then if you go down that column, you'll see, understand that that 10 less does not include the pre-K at the YMCA. Those are the, for our pre-K program, that's part of our partnership with the YMCA. So if you count those 16, we're actually at 438, which is six more than last year, okay? For Sanford Pride Elementary, our attending count, as of last Friday, was 350. Last year, October 1st, 2024, it was 382. So you can see, that's where a big difference is, of 32 students. And then, if you look at Margaret Chase Smith's school, our enrollment, as of last Friday, was 369. But you also have, one of the pre-K classes at SRTC is connected to MCS. So if you add that 16 to that, it's 385, and so we're actually down seven from that. And then if you look at Sanford Middle School, our attending count, as of last Friday, was 919. Last October 1st, it was 950, so we're down four. And then if you look at the high school, our attending count last Friday was 1,095, and our attending student count last year was 1,107. So if you can see the totals there, if you add those up, we're at 3,213 students attending, and last year we had 3,228. So you may be saying, hey, what's going on here? Okay? Well, what's going on is, if you look at the kindergarten column, which is the third column, you'll see a total number of students for kindergarten is 181. That's a small class. Last year's Grade 12 at Sanford High School, that's the one that drops off and is replaced by 180. Last year's attending for Grade 12 was 279. So you can see, there's where the difference is primarily, is large graduating class coming off the books, small kindergarten class coming in. We pay attention, there's the attending student count, but we also will pay attention to the subsidy count. And so, for example, not all of our students attending are ones that accounted for subsidy. So for example, we contract with Acton for their 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders to come. They do pay a rate towards us. We will not double-dip to be able to also get subsidy for them, okay? If you go to the back of the sheet, and you can see what was on our screen, is where those numbers are as well. When you talk about our total student enrollment, it also includes our OODs, our Out of District accounts as well. So you can see that there is a difference of 24 students who are on our attending count from our actual student population. And that's where you can see the difference there. And then, as I mentioned, for when it comes to other things for attending, you're talking about, I mentioned the Acton students, but we also have a situation where there are some students who are being homeschooled, who may be taking one or two classes with us. And if they're taking one or two classes, we can still count them for subsidy purposes, but we can't count them as a full student. There'd be a percentage of that. And so you can see that we have six students there, and then we also have one student who is on a tuition going into the Bridge Program, okay? I think the one that we really want to pay attention to is the last two columns, the last three columns. So you'll see that, for subsidy purposes, last Friday, we had a total number of students throughout the district of 3,132. You compare that to our October 1st enrollment, last October, 2024, is 3,149. You'll see that there's a difference there of 17 students. We have 17 students less. So I mentioned, this is still fluid, but I will say that I'm not optimistic that that number is going to decrease. There are some students right now who we still have in our rolls, that we're expecting to, that may have already transferred or moved to another district. And if so, we just haven't received the notification yet. So there's where you're going to see a difference of, from our students, even though, if you look at that large class in the kindergarten, you can see that we've probably gained more students throughout the year, throughout the different grades, except where you see that big discrepancy with it. We'll continue to monitor this. We'll have to certify our October 1st enrollment. We usually will have till about the middle of October to do that. So I want to thank Ann Lur and Central Office, who's really been staying on top of this, and we'll continue. I'll plan to present another enrollment update at next Monday's meeting, and we'll also plan to also present one at our October meetings as well. But are there any questions? I know that might be a little hard to follow, but that is, you'll do notice that our pre-K programs, every slot are filled with that. We have in each program, each classroom, 16, and you'll notice that all of those are fully enrolled, which is great. Want to thank Steve Bucier and his team for looking at that. As you know, we've had a waiting list, so that's not too shocking, but still, we'd want to make sure that we could maximize every opportunity for that, so.
So I have a couple of questions really quick. Well, first, to just say that the pre-K classrooms, those are the two new ones we've added, expanded on that, correct? The two 16s, we've already had others, but these two are new this year?
Nope, they're not new this year. We just pulled them out because they are kind of like, the YMCA is off-site, but it's connected to Carl J. Lamb, and SRTC is connected to Margaret Chase Smith. So they're not, we're not expanding that program. It's the same, it's the same that we had. That's just breaking it out because it is a little bit.
And so last year, it was part of the 432 before, but you're just showing it, okay?
Yes.
And then, the other thing, budget-wise, is this, we're based off that October 1st number? Last year, we're based off the 3149?
And it's a three-year average, two-year average of our enrollment. So last year, we dipped a little because the same thing, we had a small incoming kindergarten class, and we had a large graduating class. But the average helped us with this, the two-year average. This year, we're going to be averaging this amount with this enrollment with last year's. So I think we're going to, we're not going to be as fortunate.
And it's last year's October number, not the?
Correct.
Okay, not the 32, yeah, okay. All right, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question. So the kindergarten came in at 181. In your experience, is that just an off-year? Or are we seeing, you know, the first graders are at 208. Are we seeing a trend towards smaller classes? And you look at the graduating class at 279.
Yeah, I think the answer to your question is, you can see our last number with that, and you will see that, when you're at the high school, you're talking about 260, 282, 280, 297, the middle school, 222, 241, 248. And fifth grade, 214, is a small, and we have a large fourth grade class, 269. But then you'll notice, third, second, first, K are all on the small side with that. And that is, that is trending. We do, when it comes to subsidy, there is a different amount that you get for an elementary student, that you get for a secondary student. You get more for secondary students in terms of the subsidy amount. So that's helpful, as you look at it. But yeah, we are trending with smaller kindergarten classes.
I just wanted to, just to put it out there, just because the numbers are kind of whipped through, the freshman class is 297. That is a large class. So the middle school gets a little bit of a break, because the incoming fifth graders was 214, so, not that you get breaks, but I mean, that's, you know, quite a, it's, it's.
And maybe, Tracy, that might be people who are considered, credit-wise, a first-year student. We'll have to check on that, to see about those numbers.
Yeah, just a fun fact. And then, and then just looking at the Bridge, you know, the Bridge has four students that are considered elementary, two, only two that are considered middle school, which I was surprised about. Actually, I expected a lot more in the middle school. And that 20 of the students at the Bridge are from the high school, so just.
Yeah, and I think you'll have.
I didn't realize that.
Yep, no, Stacy will be here next week to give an update on the Bridge, and I think you'd probably expect those numbers to see with some of the referrals to increase with that.
With the middle school, you mean, or the high school?
Yes, yeah, I would expect more. And some of that has had to do a little bit with staffing, but we're also in better shape staffing-wise than we have been in previous years.
And just so that I'm clear, when I'm looking at this, so MCS, their pre-K numbers are included in their final number of 274. Pride's pre-K numbers of 32 are included in their final number of 351.
Yes.
Carl Lamb's pre-K numbers are, oh, I'm sorry, they're under, but that doesn't really matter. Okay, disregard. And then Carl Lamb still has quite a bit more, so they've got about roughly 75 students more than Pride, and roughly 50 more than MCS.
And there's three pre-K classes for Carl J. Lamb. There's the two that are on, but that also includes the off-site partnership we have with the Y. So those are 16 students that count for subsidy, but they're not.
But they're not in their total number, though, because it's right underneath.
They're not at Carl J. Lamb.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so, once again, we'll continue to monitor that, because as I mentioned earlier, that's a big driver for our subsidy, as you look at that. And then, last thing in my report was, at last, at our last school committee meeting in August, the school committee approved our updated Mission, Vision, Core Principles, Beliefs on Learning, and Portrait of a Future Ready Graduate. And so one thing I think that we had talked about when that happened was, we really want to make sure that that mission isn't something that is just nice. It's something that we actually are going to be able to make sure that we're living it and doing it. So I think, Amy, you've suggested that this become a, almost an agenda item. We add it to our agenda to make sure that it's listed. So we will be doing that going forward. But I also have a meeting this Wednesday with the second-year students in the Digital Design Program at Sanford Regional Technical Center. And what we're calling this is, it's an actual client meeting. And I am going to be attending as the client, as the Sanford School Department, going to the students to bring them our updated Mission, Vision, Core Principles, and Beliefs on Learning, and Portrait of a Future, and have them really a branding campaign. We want to be able to come back and share that with them, because all you see it right now is just in its written form. And so I'll be working with them to be able to kind of present that. And I think you're going to have the students really go for it, take a stab at it, to basically see what they can come up with for some suggestions and some ideas. And so we'll plan to share those ideas with the school committee, probably a timeline looking at sometime around mid-October, to be able to do that. So we're now in that section of the branding piece of it. I did talk about the Mission and the Vision and Core Principles and Portrait at our opening staff welcome back, letting them know that we were going to be working on the branding piece of it. So that's what we'll be working on now. So I'm looking forward to that client meeting on Wednesday, where we can go in, and we're going to treat that just like we normally would, that as a client, you would go in and basically say, here's what I have, this is what I'm looking for, see what you can come up with, to be able to do that. And that's all I got for Super Tense Report.
Awesome, thank you so much. It'll be great, SRTC helping with that, students. All right, moving on to Directors' Report, Principal Joel Mistracchio from the middle school.
Great to hear, yep, yep. I'd just like to start by thanking the school committee for having me tonight, as well as all of our other schools. It's certainly been a busy summer for Sanford Middle School, for myself, assuming the principalship. I'd just like to give a few thank yous out to everybody involved with that. For my staff, anybody that served on all of our hiring teams, we are in a very unique situation. We are hiring two new assistant principals, new school nurse, new staff. And I think we really did a nice job this summer getting it right, getting good, quality people that want to come to Sanford. So I think that speaks volume to our staff and our people there with that. Thank you to my admin assistants, both at my school and then at Central Office, are probably sick of getting emails from me about hiring updates and post-this job. But it's been a lot going on for them, communicating and scheduling. Our maintenance staff, they've been phenomenal, getting the building ready. Matt, Steve, and Beth, and all the admin that have kind of welcomed me on as I enter into that. My family, just, you know, they've had to deal with me, with my mind divided, back and forth, and probably will continue to do that, but it's definitely a good support network there. But it's definitely a good support network there. Towards the end of the summer, we had two new student orientations come in with our camp fifth grade that our counselors ran in social work outreach. That was really successful. They did a nice job with that, welcoming families. They kind of combined that between that day and then six through eight the following day. And it was just a nice opportunity for students that maybe have more anxiety or, or special plans, or just wanted to have a smaller feel to it. So those were two really nice, nice opportunities there. After that, we had our two teacher workshop days, as Matt spoke about a little bit. Really got a good, positive vibe, I feel, among our staff right now with where things are headed, the direction that they're headed in. Sarah was nice enough to come over with the drone and do a fly-by photograph of our staff and us try to spell out SMS. Took us a little longer than we anticipated, but I'll, I'll take that one. PTA did a nice job for our staff breakfast. They put some really nice, cool signs out. And then our stronger connections meeting, that grant, which deals with a lot of work with students, which I'll speak about, but really our staff too. And we had a number of our stronger connections people lead professional development that morning, doing some sample activities that you could do with students with that. So some team-building activities, name tags, turn and talk, how to be physically present with one another, you know, as a student, student to staff, and kind of role-play those scenarios. How your emotions as a staff will kind of dictate, you know, that demeanor and what it's reciprocated on the other end with students. So those are some of the, the activities that we, that we did with staff. Our first staff night, we had open house. It was probably one of the biggest turnouts that, that I've seen in my time. We opened the doors at five o'clock, and I think it was about twenty minutes where the line was continuous. We probably had, you know, a few thousand people that came through the door. Parents were very excited. Students were maybe slightly less excited. The smiles, you could see the difference between the two there. But overall, really, really positive night, lots of smiles all the way around with that. We also had two meetings that night for parents and for students. We had the fall sports sign-up meeting, and then we had our ecology sign-up for seventh graders. So Matt spoke a little bit about Diana Allen, who had gotten that award. And she was really a driving force as to why the Ecology School in Saco gave us this, this large portion of grant money to send all of our seventh graders overnight for two nights. So that is set to, to happen a week from tonight. We'll send half of our seventh graders to the school. We'll split the learning communities in half for two nights. And then Wednesday, we'll change out the, the two learning communities, and then the second half will go after that. So a lot of hands-on learning. There was no technology allowed for our students at the Ecology School. They, they serve their own food. They help making their own food. They get outside. It's just, it's, it's, it's a really great opportunity. So hopefully, we can, we can gain some traction there with that. So more information to come on that. We have about probably two-thirds of our seventh graders signed up for that trip and some plans in the works for ones that don't sign up and what that would look like. Opening student days, again, I'm, I'm feeling a really positive vibe from our students and staff. We started our master schedule, which has been more aligned across the board with our, without the blocks overlapping. We have a bell system that we started on Friday. It's been a really good, it's been really well-received by students and staff. We missed one ten-twenty bell on one day, and we had all the students coming up. You know, Mr. Mistracchio, you missed that ten-twenty bell. Said, okay, well, thank you for the feedback. We'll keep working it through. So, but it very much helped us align with that. Our whole-grade level lunches, we started doing that this year, which we haven't, I don't think we've done since, since I started, with the exception of fifth grade. Students are, are doing really well. There's still some things to iron out, but the feedback is really positive. Kids are getting to, to sit as many to a table within reason as they, as they can. And we're getting, you know, those whole-grade levels, you saw the enrollments. We're getting all of those whole grades through there in twenty-five minutes, which is, which is, and getting them through safely and fed. So that's, that's impressive there. Our Spartan and Flex time, I talked to you guys a little bit about that in the summer. But there's the intervention block versus the brain-break movement block. Spartan time starts at the beginning of the day. Flex starts, it comes in the middle of the day for grade six through eight, where grade five will still have their traditional recess, as done before. But right now, kids are getting outside and walking, but looking at it being a structured movement break. And we're going to expand on that as we plan different activities around that. So we're thinking some fun stuff for our sixth through eighth graders. Could end up being basketball, could be capture the flag. It could be some other things that aren't outside. It could be arts and crafts. There's a lot of cool things that we're brainstorming. And we're looking to have that schedule set in the next few weeks. So more information to come on that. Stronger connections on the student end of things. We met today. Mr. Bucier was there with us as well. Talked about our medallion program and incentive program, our Spartan raffle tickets for our students. So that's a really cool thing that our kids love doing and pulling out their prizes on Friday. And even if it's something small, they, they like doing it. And I can have lunch with Officer Jordan or Mr. Mistracchio, or I can go outside and do lunch. So it's a really, really cool opportunity with those two things. Our school counselors, they've been, they've been focusing on attendance this month, suicide prevention. And they're doing introduce, introductory lessons with, with students coming up in the next couple of weeks. We rolled the See Something, Say Something video for self-harm and school safety out today. I actually got my first tip this afternoon, and it was surprisingly well-done and very easy to just get that and navigate that. So it's another, that's a really nice second layer of things that we're already doing as a district. I was skeptical at first that it was going to be kind of one more thing that we had on our plates. It's really, seems like, you know, initial that it's going to be a good tool to have as another layer for safety with that. And we're starting to finally get into some academics. We definitely want to keep a lens on the social-emotional stuff as we continue through that, but keeping a positive climate and culture. And, and the goal is that if we are having that positive climate and culture at the middle school, we increase the attendance and we increase the engagement, and then our test scores will increase as well. So block party this, this Thursday and Friday for grades five and six, four, three, to six. And Friday, seven and eight, four, three, to six. If any school committee members would like to chaperone, you get a free snack and a fist bump. So that goes for anybody here, if you want to give up your Thursday or Friday night. That's kind of a snapshot of our opening, you know, to school. It's gone really well overall with the typical bumps in the road that come with middle school and trying to navigate that is a tough time. But we're just excited to celebrate our students this year and really, you know, with our families and in that welcoming feel. So good stuff's happened at the middle school.
Any questions for Joe or comments?
I just want to say that it's so nice to hear so much about the middle school and all the exciting things that you're doing. And you just bring such a positive feel to it all. Thank you.
I mean, that was really quick for a block party. When Claire told me that, I was like, what, already? Woo-hoo, here we go. But it is still nice weather, so I understand that. I'll look at my schedule.
Joe, I really liked the, the Flex time. And I know you, you were able to talk, speak more about it when we met with the administrators. But can you maybe talk, just give us like thirty seconds of some of the ideas and what, what, what you're thinking for that time?
Yeah, so the, the goal being that we're really, it's a twenty-five-minute chunk of time in the middle of the day. We've abutted it during lunches so that you essentially could be doing this activity and go into lunch from outside or be, you know, or vice versa, and flip it on the other end of things. But right now, we have walking. We have, you know, some board games. We have some real, you know, vanilla kind of activities. But the goal being that we have, you know, a master schedule essentially in a few weeks' time, which is a lofty goal. It's going to, going to take some time to move the needle forward. But having, by, by learning community or grade level, different activities going on during the, if I have all of the eighth grade, for example, aligned, I would know by the time and who the instructor is of that particular block. And you might have outside going. You might have capture the flag outside in Mr. Kumka's room, in Ms. Burch's room. You might have, you know, history of experiments. You might, it's really going to be tailored to what a teacher's skill set might be and what their interest level is, and also polling kids to see what they want to see as well. We could start in learning communities, but we could also go cross-grade level eventually, which is nice about our Flex time because it lends itself to that. So we're going to see how it goes. We're going to keep it within grade level for right now, for grade six to eight. And check and adjust. We'll, we'll, we'll see, you know, we'll take feedback from kids, from staff. So it's not going to be perfect with anything, with any new initiative. But I think it's, it's going to be that, that taking the cell phone away and the laptop and really just disconnecting for that twenty-five minutes and making that across the board and something fun and engaging and bringing that human element back to kids. And having fun, and teachers should be having fun during that time, too. That's an important piece to it.
I mean, I'll just add, like, I'm, I'm just so excited to hear that the lunches are going well. I just, I mean, you know, I'm a big fan of that. I just, I, I just think that it's just going to add more conversation to the kids as well and like, you know, forced to have to get to know other people. I think there's a lot of benefits to it. And the movement as well, I'm just happy to hear that the kids are going to get moving. And, and just also that hopefully they'll be more apt to be ready to learn the afternoon when that's sort of like the time that the rest of us need a coffee, you know? So thank you for all you're doing for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Joe and his team. It's been a real good opening. As you can hear from Joe, there's a lot going on, a lot of exciting change with that. Joe has thrown himself into this position. It just didn't happen. There's been a lot of work going in there, a lot of time, especially this summer as we were getting ready. Joe mentioned the hiring and putting the team together to be able to do this work. But thank you, Joe. I, that's, it's noticed, it's appreciated. And I think you're going to really lay in the groundwork for a lot of exciting things. And as you mentioned, it is middle school. So, you know, I, I, I used to be a middle school principal, and I used to tell people the road to success is always under construction. It's middle school. Sometimes it's a pothole. Sometimes the roads shut down. But that's what you're navigating in terms of doing that. And whether it's the Ecology School or some of the other things that you have planned and the energy, you can be able to see that. So thank you, Joe, and really appreciate all you're doing, all your team's doing for that. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, guys.
All right, following Joe, we have Tracy Gibson from the high school. Welcome.
There we go. It seems like yesterday that I was in Joe's, Joe's seat. So I know how hard it is when you start off and you're trying to learn everything. And I can say, reflecting back even over my first year, it was great. And, you know, just kind of echoing what Joe says, it's, definitely takes a team. And we're, we are so lucky in Sanford, from central office team, school committee, all the way down, to have a great bunch of people that we work with and the community members and students. It has been great coming back. I think, as Matt mentioned, athletics started in the middle of August. So we've been back in class for a little over a week. But I feel like the halls started really waking up from the summer when students came, came back for sports. So again, to echo what you have heard, we started officially August twenty-six with our new staff. And that night, we had our freshman orientation night. Along with the freshman orientation night, we also had the marching band, friends and family, out on the, the alumni field. So that was nice, too, just to really kick it off. And that's always fun, to see everyone. And then on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, we, we kicked it off with all staff in the building. An outstanding welcoming from Superintendent Nelson. That's always motivating. And then a lot of professional development, time for departments to get together, catch up, set some goals, and also having our teachers have some time in their classrooms. Before, we had our freshmen the, the next week. And that one, you know, it's always nice to see them very excited, even on step-up day when they came in and they toured SRTC. We felt an energy from this, this class. And today, walking around, staff were saying, you know, it's just been such a positive start. And getting around into the classrooms, a lot of the things that we talk to the students about, you know, one of the big things is cell phones. And as of today, we only had one cellphone issue, which is really outstanding. And even just like in the morning when the first bell rings, students are supposed to go off and get into their classrooms, and that's looking really good this year, too. We have rolled out really making students accountable for being on campus and that we're not an open campus. So we have situated ourselves around the exterior doors before Spartan time to try and really get that message out to our students. And that's going, that's going really well as well. So this morning, we rolled out the See Something, Say Something. We're excited about that as another tool, as Joe mentioned, to support our students with an anonymous opportunity if they see something or they have any concerns about their peers or themselves, that they have another way. They, we, I would say that I feel strongly that our staff have wonderful relationships, and they do have a trusted adult. But this will just add another layer if a student needs it, so, or one of their peers needs that. Last week, we had the opening for our fall play, Our Town. Brett Williams told me that it's the biggest turnout with over sixty students coming out for that. So auditions start this week, which is really exciting. They're also doing things a little differently. Whereas before, they have cut students from theater, and they are committed to making sure that everyone that wants to be a part is going to be able to have a part, one way or another. So that's really exciting. Academics, we will be rolling out our main-through-year assessment connected with the NWA, and that is assessing our Common Core standards. That window is September fifteenth through October twenty, October twenty-fourth. So we will be doing that, as well as the PSATs will happen on October twenty-first. But before that, we have, tomorrow will be the unveiling. You all know what the travel abroad, the Sanford abroad trip is going to be. But the juniors will be finding that out tomorrow. So that's going to be very exciting. And then along with sports, the school has also been filled with all the students preparing for homecoming. Sanford has always done an amazing job with their homecoming. And that will be the, starting the week of the sixth, October sixth, and it will conclude on the eleventh with the homecoming dance. So lots of exciting things. Saturday, October twenty-fifth, will be the marching band finals. I don't know if any of you have been able to attend that, but that is an incredible time. Just all the marching band competitors from all around are there, and it is a packed stadium with amazing performances. Sanford always does really well, so you should come if you want to see that. For our current enrollment, I did check on that this morning, but you are correct. So it's the, it's two ninety-seven for the, the freshmen. Even if they don't earn the credits, they're still considered, like, they would move up to a sophore's. So the sophore's, I think, are at two eighty-one, the eleventh grade, two eighty-two, and our seniors are two sixty-six. Some exciting news from our school counseling is ad-drop numbers this year, we're at three ninety. Seems like a lot, but they were at five eighty last year. So that was about two hundred less. A lot of factors go into that, but two of the, I think the main things that we are looking at is freshmen picked their schedules. We had a meeting in the, in the spring where students and families came. And it was a clear message that we weren't going to be doing the, the dropping because I want to be, I found out my friends in a different class. If it was, you know, a change because of leveling, they accommodated them. And also allowing the upperclassmen to choose late arrival and early dismissal in their schedule, because a lot of that, they couldn't do until the fall. So that, that meant a lot of appointments with the school counseling. So big shout-out to them. They were still doing some today, but Friday was the official last day. It's always a, a busy time for them and for students, so that went over really well. The other big thing that we have going on is our accreditation. And we will have our first visit on September twenty-fourth with our liaison. And he will roll that out to the staff and really explain the accreditation process has changed drastically since Sanford last did it. And I, I look. I, I look forward to the staff, the community, um, the students having input in that, and really, this whole year is a self-reflection. You know, what are we doing well? Where are our areas of, um, need for improvement? So, after he comes out on the 1st of October, the staff will take a survey on where they see that we are in relationship to our standards. And then, on October 2nd, the survey will be sent out for the community input. And on, um, October 6th, we will have students take the survey and we'll go from there. And then, every week, we will have, uh, plan to roll out our self-reflection study during ERD time. So, that's, I think, sums up our opening. Yeah?
Busy as well. I will just say, um, I, you know, I have friends, 'cause I work in math, so like, all over, they're all like, watch, you know, everything that we do in Sanford. Um, "we" meaning you all in the middle school and the high school in particular, 'cause that's just what I'm sharing on my Facebook page. But that, they're all jealous, envious. They're like, "God, I wish we did this. I wish we did that." And I just hear it time and time again. And, um, you know, communities that you would think that they would be doing more than us, and we are doing more, um, I think, than anyone that I can think of. So, um, that's just a shout-out to you and to your staff, Joe, and to your staff, because, you know, when you talk about block parties, most other middle schools are not doing those right now. Do you know what I mean? Um, and the high school, just with, with everything, you know? Um, there's just so much opportunity, um, at the high school for kids. Um, and it just keep getting them to be involved, and there's just so many different ways to be involved. So, um, just, thank you.
Are we, and so the, the marching band finals, we're hosting them?
Yeah.
Oh, at our high school? So, that's, that's amazing for a lot of reasons, but we have a facility that, to be able to, to have all these folks come. It takes them a lot of work, I'm sure. And so, there's a lot of people probably involved, and, um, if you need volunteers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
As a matter of fact.
26th of October, October.
We'll, we'll try to have Haley Francore come to the school committee. We'll look at maybe the October meeting where she can talk about that. And I'll just add, usually what happens is, you will host the finals, and then they rotate around. They don't rotate around. We've hosted them, and we do such a good job, and the venue works out, that that's, we, we are now taking that on. And we've taken it on gladly, but it, you're right, there is a lot of work that goes into that. But as, as Tracy mentioned, uh, it's a very, um, it's a, um, I'm very proud that night when we're able to put off an event to that thing. Jason, uh, will be speaking next. He's got, obviously, a big role in that as a facilities and maintenance director, but he's a former band parent himself. So, he, that, that also helps us in some ways to be able to know the magnitude of what has to take place to do that. But I think it speaks to, you know, Zach will come in and talk about our athletic numbers are solid. Are, you heard what Brett Williams, the numbers are for the theater? Our marching band numbers are growing. You know, is, the, the opportunities that we're providing for our kids and being able to find their connection to our school and their sense of belonging is so important. And that's a big, you know, credit to Tracy and her staff and all of her stakeholders for being able to do that. So, thank you for it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we are having Jason Dudley come up, facilities update. Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Um, the mic is on, the green light? Is that better? There you go. Um, good evening. Um, I'm pleased to report the extensive, extensive work that has been done, um, to the district's facilities over this summer. Um, our custodial maintenance team, work, teams worked diligently to ensure the buildings are safe, clean, and ready for this school, for the new school year. Um, it's exciting to hear, um, you know, the update from the principals on my end. I kinda get into a, into a tunnel of building, 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 building. And so, um, it's exciting to hear how the work that they've done, that, that our team has done, um, directly impacts the students. Um, our custodial team, uh, completed deep cleaning throughout the district, which included furniture walls, windows, light fixtures. Um, they completed wall repair, touch-up painting, floor stripping and refinishing, um, thorough tile and carpet cleaning. Um, this work was, um, completed while accommodating our summer programs, um, our food service programs, sports, camps, and other community events. Um, those sometimes take a lot of planning amongst our head custodians to work around. And so, um, it was successfully done in all of our buildings. Um, we are, we are, for the first summer, fully staffed, so that helped. Um, but it still is a, um, it's always down to the wire to get those, those projects done. Um, this summer, um, I focused heavily on infrastructure upgrades that directly, uh, impacts student safety and learning environments. Um, we completed wastewater, um, drainage descaling at Sanford Middle School, um, to prevent future plumbing issues. At Sanford Pride Elementary School, we replaced, um, HVAC starter motors. And at Carl J. Lamb, um, we, um, replaced HVAC, um, expansion tank. Our commitment to energy efficiency is evident. Um, at the Sanford Middle School, we did an LED, um, light upgrade and, light upgrade in the, um, library, um, allowing areas that can be dimmed for, um, for the promethium board use, usage, and different sections can be turned on and off, um, replacing the old, um, um, tube, uh, fluorescent tube lighting. Um, we recognize the importance of comfortable learning environments, and we made a significant investment, um, looking ahead. Sanford Pride Elementary School is scheduled to receive a new rooftop HVAC unit in October, um, future, um, further improving air quality in the building. Um, some of those, um, rooftop units were value-engineered when we, um, remodeled the building. So, we've been working through our capital improvement plan to replace them, um, one at a time. So, this is the first year, and, um, and next year, we will do the second one, and then, and then, and then a third one. Staff, and staff, student, and community safety remains a top priority. Um, at Cobb Stadium, um, we completed a significant safety improvement by upgrading the five, uh, tiered aluminum bleachers at the top of the stadium. And, um, we removed the home and away bleachers that no longer met safety codes. We worked collaboratively with the Parks and Rec Department, Public Works, and our district's maintenance team to remove the pylons, spread loom, plant grass, um, where the old, um, home bleachers were located. Um, this work is a continuing effort to provide a safe facility for student athletes, spectators, and community members. Um, that was a big project, um, and I know, um, it's not the end of the project, it's the beginning of the project. And I'm, and I'm hopeful that we can, um, you know, have a great product down there when it's all said and done. Um, we enhanced safety at, um, many of our campuses. Along with painting curbs at Carl J. Lamb, we installed a, a safety fence that separated the parking area from the bus drop-off lane. This ensures pedestrians are directed to the designated crosswalk and creating a single uniform location for students and visitors, visitors to cross the bus lane. The, we had had problems in the past where people were just crossing wherever. And, um, so now it is directed to where the crosswalk is. Um, student, um, staff is able to monitor that, you know, and monitor when the buses are coming. So, it, it's a definite safety, um, upgrade for us. Um, we upgraded, um, the handicap bollards at Margaret Chase Smith. Um, in addition, we, um, painted a designated bus lane, um, sign it, we redid the signage at Margaret Chase Smith for the bus lane, um, hopeful that we can keep cars and parents out of the bus lane when the buses are trying to, um, to drop off. Um, we, we completed concrete step repair at Pride Elementary, Willard School, Carl J. Lamb, and we restripped the parking lot at Sanford High School. So, big projects, um, on the safety side. Um, several projects directly supported our, um, academic programming. Um, at the Sanford Regional Technical Center, we retrofitted a classroom for our new sports medicine program. Um, this shows our commitment to expanding educational opportunities. Um, we extended the air-compressed lines at the welding shop and machine shop, improving functionality for our career and technical education spaces, spaces. And the Sanford High School, um, next week will be receiving upgraded, um, upgraded sinks, providing better, uh, hands-on, um, learning for our students. Um, the sinks that were installed with the, with the building were a little too small to be able to wash the glass beakers, so we're installing larger sinks, um, in those countertops. Um, and we assisted our IT department with the modernization of classroom technology, um, by removing outdated display boards and installing new mounted breakfast, uh, brackets to ensure, um, classrooms equipped with current technology. Um, fresh environments contribute to the learning experience. Sanford Middle School and Carl J. Lamb, um, got hallways painted, so there's a new blue, um, rather than a, at, at Carl J. Lamb, there's a new blue color above all the, um, tile on the first floor. I think it really, um, updated what, um, what we had before. Um, and the Sanford Performing Arts Center, um, their hallways were also painted, um, creating a warming, a welcoming space for, um, for the public coming in. A lot of times, um, a lot of our community members, that's, that's the area that they're seeing, um, because they may not have students in the school. So, we wanna make sure we're making significant investments in keeping that looking great. Um, the last thing that we did was our, our maintenance crew, um, up, um, constructed separate office space for our food service director and his admin assistant, um, creating, um, this workspace, um, really improved their job functionality. Uh, we did, um, looking forward, um, we, actually, I'm sorry, facilities, um, sorry. We prepared, we prepared Lafayette for the sale, so we cleaned out all of our stuff. Um, this was in conjunction with the real estate agent for the city, um, ensuring a smooth transition between the sale and, uh, between us and the new owner. So, hopefully, that'll be going through soon. Um, looking forward, our team continues to work with, um, with the city on planning and preparation for the USDA warehouse for the food service department. Um, the hope of this will, um, it'll enhance the nutritional, the nutrition services capabilities district-wide. Um, I've talked with David about this. I think he's able to take larger orders from USDA, making, um, making, having better, different options for our students. Um, so yeah, so, I mean, conclusion-wise is, is, um, you know, we've had a very, we've had a very busy summer.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, for your continued support of the facilities department. Um, I believe that our facilities are a, um, are the first step to having good education. Uh, if our kids don't have a place to go that is well-maintained, and, um, it makes, it makes your, it makes the educator process more difficult. Any questions?
I just wanna say, thank you so much. I mean, I know, um, on top of everything that you had going on, that you just stated plus more, the Cobb, you know, that's just an appendage of really the priority of Sanford Schools, and I realize how much work that was. So, thank you so much. Paul and I actually have children having a game there right now.
Right.
So, um, thank you, um, because there is many, uh, middle school students in particular, and elementary that are benefiting from all that work that was done, um, over the summer. But, um, again, bravo to everything you did, and thank you so much for your leadership.
I think a few years ago, when you came and you spoke, I think we met afterwards outside, and I just said, "Thank you so much for everything that you and everybody that is your crew does for us." Because, um, and I don't think you get a lot of thank-yous. It's like being a mom, and you're constantly cleaning, constantly fixing, and constantly preparing. And like, everybody just sort of walks in and thinks that it's all just sort of...
Magic.
Poof, magically happens. But it doesn't. And, uh, it's a lot of work and a lot of logistics and maneuvering and planning and the work. And let's not forget that some of that work was done out in the sun in the middle of the summer. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, Jason, the, I'm glad you mentioned the things that you did, because first and foremost, our buildings and our grounds look great. They look great. And that just doesn't happen. There's a lot of work there, but you also went in to talk about some of the things that might not be as visible, that are still just as important for us to do, whether it's Cobb Stadium or Lafayette, that aren't really some of the things directly impacting us, uh, as much as the things that you're doing throughout the district that way. So, a big thank you to you and your team, uh, for that. It's greatly appreciated. And I think you are seeing people who are being able to notice the stuff that's happening. Uh, and then also, just like you say, the functionality and some things right now that might not catch your eye, but absolutely are so critical to helping our people, our students learn and our, our staff to be able to, to, uh, teach and with that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, that list is a kind of a wow. And on top of that, you're mowing the lawn, you're still doing all the other things that we would, you know, you have to do every day. Um, and honestly, the amount of pride that you are teaching our kids to have in their space, as well as just in their school department, right? Like, that, that's a, you're a huge contributor of, you know, our kids walking around, um, just being proud of, of Sanford Schools, um, you know, and also helping keep, keep things clean. So, that's incredible.
Thank you. All right.
So much. All right. Moving on to Mr. B. See Something, Say Something pre-K update and transportation update.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so I wanna start this evening, um, talking about the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System. Um, we did, today, launch the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System with students in grades five through 12. Um, the system allows individuals to submit a secure anonymous safety tip, um, through, they can do it through a mobile app, they can do it by calling the line, or they can do it online. You have a sticker that I've shared with you this evening, um, for the three ways in which somebody can submit an app. But it could be a parent, or it could be a student. Um, like the building principals mentioned today, this is a tool in the toolbox. Um, our staff really have a good relationship with kids, and kids share things all the time. This is just another tool in that toolbox. So, um, today, students were shown a video. There was two separate videos. There was a video for students in grades five, and then there was a video that was for students in grades six through 12. The video was about 20 to 25 minutes, um, long. Um, and families this morning were also sending an email out to them through, um, IC, explaining, um, the, um, Say Something Reporting System to them. Um, our website has also been updated. Um, if you go to our main page, you'll notice this logo is right on our main page. And then, there's a separate page on Sanford High School and a separate page on Sanford Middle School, um, that explains some more information to parents. Um, so when a tip is made, these are, um, taken into a call center where there are professionals that, um, are trained, licensed, and they screen the calls. And they determine if they are a life safety tip or a non-life safety tip. A non-life safety tip could be, could be an instance of bullying, um, of that nature. In that case, our school administrators and our school counselors, they get a text and they get an email with the tip. And so, they'd be able to go onto the system, they log in, they can see what the tip is, and there's a communication log where we work through, um, that tip. If there's a situation where, um, we have a life de-safety tip, that is a phone call, um, that is made to our administrators, our lead school counselor, and it's also goes to our, um, 911 system here in Sanford, and our police department are also connected. And that is 24/7. So, that can, that's 24/7 through 65 days a year. Those are where those tips come through. Um, we are expecting, uh, a number of reports this week. Um, but as we move along, there are data shows with other school systems that have implemented this, the data will, it will level out with that. Um, we did receive... We did receive a tip today, through, it was a non-life safety tip that came through the system. Like Joe mentioned earlier, the middle school team was able to process that in real time with that. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of the work that our school administrators have done, and our school counselors have done to get trained to implement this, and I think it's just another tool in the toolbox that hopefully will help keep our kids and everybody safe. Are there any questions that anybody has?
I mean, I think it's amazing, so I, I think just, I think it's great, and the more it's branded, I think will be, you know, people will sort of like, oh, I remember hearing that. I will just say for myself, I don't believe I got anything, just as a side note, from any, from, I just checked my phone, too, so just.
Good to know.
Yeah, I don't know if any, if anybody else got anything, so.
Okay, I'll check on that.
An email or text or whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is pre-K. Like Matt mentioned earlier, we have 112 students, we are fully enrolled in pre-K. Our pre-K staff met prior to the beginning of school. We talked about some goals for the year, and we also talked about some professional development that we're going to be working on this year in terms of mathematics. Beth Lambert, the curriculum director, is going to be talking about our focus on mathematics. Pre-K is doing the same thing. With that, we started school last Thursday. There were a number of students that had moved in to this, our pre-K programs. As students had exited, we filled those slots up. I'd like to say thank you to our pre-K staff. They worked to get all of those kiddos in and to get them screened last week, which really is a big deal when we're talking about our little ones coming in. We do have a waiting list, about 30 students still. As we move one out, another one moves on the list, so we do have a need there. I visited the pre-K classrooms last Thursday, and it's, it's always interesting to see on the first day, there were some tears, but I visited back today and everybody was, they're settling ni, it's amazing, they are settling in nicely. The one little boy who was really having a hard time on Thursday, he saw me, and he was smiling, and he sort of nodded, he remembered me from Thursday. So they're off, they're off to a good start with that. Transportation.
Can I just ask, sorry, interrupt you. With the pre-K, the, just out of curiosity, when we started pre-K, was it three, what, what grade are those kids in now? Would they be third grade?
No, I think they're in second.
Okay.
I think they're in second grade.
Okay, just out of, just, just curious how, you know, behaviors and, you know, all that sort of readiness, how, how we're monitoring that. I'm sure there is a crew probably doing that, but.
I think if you walk into our kindergarten classrooms, you, you notice a difference right from the get-go, and the social, emotional, this, their ability to do school, and their ability to manage their emotions. I think the academic piece, we're starting to get some traction with that academic piece. I think we were, we have some headwinds against us in terms of services provided through CDS, and a lot of students are coming in, they're not receiving the services that they need to be receiving. I think once we get that CDS piece figured out, once we start getting our kids our services, then we're going to take off, and we're going to, they're going to be flying, but we're seeing an impact.
And if you do visit pre-K classrooms, try not to do it in the afternoon, because that's the break time when they, I've learned that, that, don't show up then. They're trying, they're, they're trying to, to relax at that time, so they don't need any stimulation.
Yes, the pre-K teachers will appreciate that. Last thing before we move on to the crisis plan, transportation. I'd like to say a big thank you to our drivers and our monitors and Rose over at Ledgemere. The beginning of the year is always a challenge, as we, they do their riding over the summer, we notify folks of, this is your bus stop in the times. The drivers, we have to keep in mind, they have to learn their routes, they have to learn the names of kids, they have to make sure they know the parents, and really, it's a big responsibility that they take on, and so I think, just to say thank you to them for all of their work. They are working to adjust times. Last week, the time of opening day was a bit of a challenge in terms of getting our buses out on time, but since then, it's been getting better day after day after day. And then we had today where we had a mechanical issue with a bus that caused a delay, so they're trying their best to get those times down. In general, our students are getting home quicker, they're not having to wait at the school as long. I was over at the middle school today, I said, Joe, what time your bus is getting out of here? He said, oh, they're, they're out of here by 3:15, 3:16, 3:20. I said, don't tell the other schools, because they're getting out of the middle school with like 10 minutes after dismissal, which is really good, really, really good. So they're going to continue to refine their routes with that. We will be moving to a new routing system, just so everybody is aware. VersaTrans, the system that we're currently using, it, it needs to be updated, and so we are moving to a new system, and we'll have more information to families later this fall. The new system will allow tracking, to track, to be able to track the bus, and it'll be a new way to access your bus information. We will be moving to that new system. They've already started to use it behind the scenes, but it is coming soon. And that's all I have for my report, before we move on to the next piece.
Just want to say for parents to be patient. I know we, we do a great job starting school, our buses, but sometimes, like you said, that bus broke down, you know, there's things that happen, and just, you know, give the bus company some grease, and, and Steve as well.
For last week, the, I can't remember what road it was, or tow truck, they were towing something out of somebody's yard, and they blocked, they blocked the road for 10 minutes, so, it's stuff like that, so. Okay, tonight I have for you, oh, are we done with my report?
Yeah.
Okay. Tonight I have for you the crisis plan in front of you. This, the meat of it is pretty much the same that we've had from year to year. Every year, the Safety Committee, along with our SROs, our school administrators, they go through and we review the plan. In that plan, just from the get-go, the title has been changed. The main Department of Ed now calls it the Comprehensive Health and Safety Emergency and Management Plan, instead of just Crisis Plan, they've changed the terminology. We have updated things such as the directory, our crisis and emergency procedures, the alarm phone trees, the radio call signs, our evacuation sites. All of that is sort of run-of-the-mill stuff that we update every year. The big piece that's in there is, the change this year is anonymous threats. How do we handle when we receive an anonymous threat through a phone, or it's written on the wall? And we didn't really have a whole lot in our current crisis plan, and so the main school safety center, they put together a sort of a protocol of what they recommended. We took that, and we adapted that to fit our needs here in Sanford. The SROs have taken that, and they've developed a presentation, and they've trained our administrative assistants, who are the frontline people. They did that in their workshop that we had with them in August, and so I think that was really well-received, and they appreciate that.
About receiving anonymous threats, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Our SROs also have trained new staff on Alice. They did that during the new teacher workshop day, and they are going to be doing a refresher in the buildings in September and October, so that's sort of some ongoing work. We will be looking to have another parent evening. We did not do one last year, and so we're looking to do one last week in October. We're looking to secure a location. We had a date, but the location's not going to work, so we're looking to secure that, but we'll get information out to parents and guardians as soon as we have that. And that is all I have for you this evening, and I think you have to approve that.
And that, that plan, I did, that's something, obviously, we're not going to show here or make it public for people, but I did share it with the school committee, so you can get a sense of, you know, that information Steve gave the overview for.
Okay, I make a recommendation to adopt the Comprehensive Health and Safety Emergency and Management Plan as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Perfect. Thank you so much. Moving on to old business, there is none, moving on to resignations and retirements.
Yep, some resignations to announce. Matt Willett, middle school soccer coach, Stephanie Lane, Ed Tech 3 at the middle school, Bethany Delacroce, Special Ed Ed Tech at CGL, Deborah Kirk, Ed Tech Sanford Middle School, Bree Manser, Sanford Middle School Ed Tech, Megan Kylie, Ed Tech Virtual Learning at the high school, Audrey Whitehead, Sanford Middle School Ed Tech. Those are things that obviously, we, we did have those prior to just today. I don't want people to think we had these people resigning just, yeah, just with that, so, with that. Those are us getting caught up on those. There are some appointments that I'd like to announce. Susie McDonald, Ed Tech 3 at Carl J. Lamb, Lynn Greenwood, Ed Tech 3 at the resource room at the high school, Marissa Stam, Outreach at Margaret Chase Smith, Ashley Wood, Salem Junkins, Brittany Dixon, Ashley Blake as kitchen personnel throughout the district, Crystal Tobias, the CICFP Project Manager for Food Service, and Ashley Harris in Ed Tech 3 Self-contained at Margaret Chase Smith. Have a couple athletic stipends to announce. Kaylee Duwa, Sanford Middle School Boy Soccer Coach, and also, our numbers for golf were so high that it came out, to be able to accommodate that, we were able to shift a stipend around, so Connor Kilroy is Assistant Golf Coach. Those are Schedule B assignments. We have had some transfers to happen. Renee Bernier, Middle School Kitchen to MCS Kitchen, Heather Gagne, Kitchen Personnel at the middle school, staying at the middle school but increased hours. Deborah Selfridge, Kitchen Personnel at the middle school, going to be the lead kitchen personnel at the middle school. Jennifer Spellman, Title 1 Ed Tech at Carl J. Lamb to Title 1 Ed Tech 2 at Carl J. Lamb. Pam Souzer, Ed Tech 1 at the high school, moving to the middle school as an Ed Tech 1. Christine Kelly, substitute, who subbed for us, is now going to be an Ed Tech 2 in the Life Skills Program at the middle school. Catherine Pullley, who was our study hall Ed Tech at the high school, moving to be a Special Education Ed Tech at the high school. Lenora Hartford, who did some subbing for us, is also now going to be an Ed Tech 1 in the self-contained program at Carl J. Lamb. And then I do have a couple nominations that the school committee will have to take action on. So those nominations, have Kelly McBean as a bridge teacher over at our bridge program, and John Sanford as a special ed teacher at Sanford Pride Self-contained with that. So we're going to need school committee to accept those two nominated professional staff.
I'll make a motion to accept the two nominations as presented.
I second that. Perfect. All in favor? Perfect, thank you. Okay, moving on to policies and procedures. Come on up, Mr. B.
Sorry, I was quick. Okay, the following policies and procedures will be presented for first reading this evening. I have Policy DKC, which is Expense Authorization and Reimbursement, and accompanying the procedure that goes along with that, DKC-R. Policy DKC, Expense Authorization and Reimbursement, and its accompanying procedure establishes a comprehensive system for managing employee expense reimbursements, and it's replacing our previous policy, which had a different code, DLC, Expense Reimbursement. This new, more detailed policy ensures the school district maintains control of expenditures through a structured approval and reimbursement process. It's just more detailed than our old process was. Policy DM, Cash in School Buildings. This adds that petty cash should be kept in a locked depository that the principal is aware of in the office. We, we didn't have really a specific location in our old policy, and so this adds that specific location. Policy EB, Safety Program. Updated Safety Program Policy EB keeps the same basic policy, but it adds three main requirements, which is mandatory staff safety training based on an employee's job duties. It adds that we have a district safety committee, and it expands student safety lessons, and which includes bicycle safety that we didn't have before. Policy EBCA, Comprehensive Emergency Plan. Policy EBCA, this is what I presented to you this evening, was last revised in 2014, and like I mentioned earlier, it's being renamed to the Comprehensive Health and Safety Emergency Management Plan. The key change requires a school to form a steering committee upon the request by any school committee member or full-time school employee. The school, the steering committee, composed of school employees, school committee members, parents, and community members, will review regularly and refine the district's comprehensive health and safety plan to ensure ongoing emergency preparedness. This was something that came out through state law around the time of COVID. So if you think back to COVID, there was things that were controversial at the time, and so I think that is why this was put into place, and that specific language is required in our policy. The way I look at this, I think we're, we're covered by, we have a safety committee structure that meets monthly, and we talk about things, so I think, at the end of the day, I think we have a good structure, and I think that could work through that if something were to occur. And so my recommendation is to accept the first reading of policies, DKC, DM, EB, EBCA, and the procedure DKC-R.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the policy DKCDM, EB, EBCA, and procedure DK-R as presented.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
And I have one policy for second reading tonight, that is Policy KF, Community Use of Sanford Public School Facilities. We did a first reading on this the last meeting. We did go in and change a line, Melissa, that you wanted, that we had talked about during the policy committee, in terms of custodians not handling outside equipment, so that line has been strictly added in there, and I've also linked in there the fee schedule, and so I recommend approval, second reading of that, Policy KF.
Could you repeat what you said about a fee schedule?
The fee schedule is linked there, so if someone wants to rent our facilities, whether it be a classroom, athletic fields, a SPAC, the fee schedule has been linked into the agenda with that.
And just as people know, this, before this came to the policy committee, Brett Williams and Zach Lemlin, our Athletic Director and the Performing Arts Center Director, they worked to review it so that it could come back in to make sure that it was also something that was meeting our needs that way in terms of any adjustments or any changes as well.
And just, if my memory serves me correctly, I don't believe that there was a lot of changes that they made regarding the fee structure.
There was not a lot of changes that they made to the fee structure. It mirrors, the way that athletics was set up was, was not the same as the SPAC, and so they've set the document up so it looks similar, depend, so it's set up the same. There was a minimal increase in expenses, but it's really not a whole lot of changes to either the fee schedule or the policy itself.
And I think part of it, I wish I had my notes with me, was like, Lisa, just because you brought it up, with the, like, cancellation, I think that that was definitely something, because we couldn't, if people were canceling last minute, especially with the Performing Arts Center, that would have stopped us getting other business, so there, they were going to be a charge.
Right.
Yep. That really wasn't in the policy prior to.
Correct, they, they increased the, the amount of days, and so the day, they shortened the amount.
Right. For cancellation.
Yeah.
So, oh, I was going to say, I make a motion to accept Policy KF as, second reading of Policy KF as presented.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, yeah, discussion, yeah.
How does this affect space at adult ed? Because I know that they do also rent out space, and they, it's not, is that considered the same as this fee structure? Because I know that it hadn't in the past.
The adult ed, this follows the, this applies to adult ed, but there are times when we make make, it may differ slightly based on the, based on the request and what that arrangement looks like. So for some, so for instance, at adult ed, sometimes we may have somebody that asks to use an office space.
Right.
That we, we rent out to them.
I just want to make sure that there's something in there. If somebody goes to adult ed and wants to rent a classroom space for an hour, they're not gonna end up paying hundreds of dollars when they've been used to paying $20 or something like that. That's not gonna cause an issue.
No, there's also in the, in the fee schedule, there's profit, for-profit, non, nonprofit, and so it's not, it hasn't changed from what we had previously.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still, it's still what we had previously.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to amend?
No, I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So all in favor? Perfect, thank you. All right. Does anyone have any items for future agendas? No? No? Okay. Calendar announcements?
Sure. One that's not listed on the agenda but is exciting is, right now, for this Wednesday, September 10th, we received word that Governor Mills is gonna be visiting Sanford Regional Technical Center, so still working out some of those details, but that'll be this Wednesday. As I mentioned earlier, the Special Ed Advisory Committee's meeting is this Wednesday at Sanford Community Adult Education at 2:30. There's also a Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation meeting this Wednesday as well, that'll be at 4:00 down at Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center. Steve mentioned the Safety Committee. Their next meeting is gonna be Monday, next Monday, September 15th at 3:15, right at Central Office. Our next school committee meeting is next Monday, 6:00 right here in the chambers. We'll have updates from elementary principals, we'll also have a bridge update, athletics update, SRTC update, and also looking at our communications plan. Next Wellness Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, September 23rd, that'll be in the chambers at 3:15. Policy Committee meeting is Monday, September 29th, that'll be at Central Office, 8:00 a.m. And then our first school committee meeting in October is Monday, October 6th at 6:00 p.m. And then we also have the long weekend, September 10th, Friday, September 10th, is a Teacher in Service Day, and Monday, the October 13th, is Indigenous People Day. So those are up there. Also, just want to mention that the leadership team for the city, we have our meeting this Thursday, that'll be at 10:30 right in the City Managers Conference Room. The Alumni Association has a, a lot of work that they've done. A ticket booth dedication is gonna be taking place this Friday at 5:30 down at Alumni Stadium. That's prior to the football game, which begins at 7:00. Drummond and Woodson is doing their legislative update, and Steve and I will be attending that next Monday, September 15th. National Honor Society had, the high school, Sanford High School has their induction ceremony, that'll be at 7:00 p.m. on September 17th. And as mentioned, I think, there's the lip sync for the Sanford Backpack Program is scheduled for Saturday, September 27th. So those are some other dates and things that are not, that weren't listed on the announcements that have come out since after the agenda.
And we do want to apologize that numerous members of the school committee are not available on the 27th, unfortunately, for the lip sync challenge, although we are the reigning champions. Sorry, City Council. Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 7:36.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.